It's like we're ready to start. All right, everybody, we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me if you would like. So we, the next item on our agenda is public comment. I wonder if there's anybody in the gallery who has a public comment to share? All right, there is one public comment that I was asked to read because the commenter, our neighbor from Stowe, Christine Lorenzo, is not able to attend for, her family is feeling a bit ill tonight, so we appreciate her staying home, and we wanted to read the following in her step. The meeting materials will reflect the longer version of this statement, so she wanted to be read into the record. Quote, "Over 100 district parents and caregivers are in support of keeping four classrooms next year for the third grade at center school. Please review the detailed document in the meeting materials. We ask the school committee to place foundational elementary classrooms as a priority in the budget." All right, so that is all we have for public comments, so we're going to move on next to the consent agenda. And I'll turn to Amy maybe for...
Sure, I moved to approve the January 29th, 2025 consent agenda.
I'll second that. Do we have any comments, discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, moving on. The next item is the school committee chairperson update, but there's nothing beyond the agenda that I have to share. So we will next go to our student representative report, and I see that Ryan Mietzschel is here with us. Hi, Ryan.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys plan on like talking about our meeting later today, but I can talk about that a little bit. So Ms. Boyd, Dr. Boyd and Superintendent Downing, they came down to Neshoba and met with another student council just to kind of talk about like furthering the relationship between the students and the committee. So we first kind of, we've developed like a more system to start meeting a little more frequently, so we decided we were going to meet with three times, one in, one like a little bit earlier in the fall, and then before we break out for December, and then one later. So we're, those meetings would just kind of talk about go, different goals and how we were gonna like connect ideas. So when we started talking today, something that came up a lot was how useful you guys were in kind of pointing us in the right direction for each of our issues, because a couple of the other girls there had like specific questions, and then you guys from the school committee were able to say, "That's, that's Dr. Boyd and's job, talking to her about that." "That's Superintendent Downing's job, talking about that." So it was like, it was helpful kind of like directing each other in that essence. And then Ava and I also, we, with our delegate assembly for the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives, we both applied for director positions and got them, so. There was like, there was about seven or eight of us. So I'm the Director of Resources, and she's the Director of Communications. So we each have our own like subcommittee who outwork with us, and so like, it's a whole different, like it's basically, the whole message behind it was to increase the student representative between different school districts, so we gotta meet and kind of see what other committees and other school districts are doing. And so like the Director of Resources, what I do is I do a lot of like the material that's being sent out, like the actual exchange of what's kind of going on, and Ava helps like, we actually work closely together as the Directors, so Ava like helps publicize a lot of what we do on like, she runs the Instagram and Discord, so that's like kind of the big thing that's been going on. The last week or so was midterm weeks, so a lot of like school was very centered on that, so not like too much other activities. I mean, hockey and basketball, I have games today, and basketball had game yesterday, so. So I got for you guys, any questions about the meeting or anything else?
Fantastic, thanks, Ryan. Any, any questions or anything you'd like to say? Amy and I were really happy to meet with you, just so that the committee knows, this is one of the goals that we set for the Communications Subcommittee to further the policy that is the letter...
J I B.
J I B, thank you. Which is that the school committee will interface with the student council on a somewhat regular basis. And so the Communications Subcommittee organized, and the Chair of the Communications and the Chair of the School Committee and the Superintendent will visit with the Principal, Dr. Boyd, and thank you for your time, and the StuCo, and it was a really productive conversation just setting the parameters. So we don't look to disappoint, but we do want to make sure we are guiding them and helping them understand what is within our purview and what is not. And so the conversation was great, we really did focus on the handbook, which was cool.
Yep.
So, it was good, right?
It was, it was really great, and I think it's just beginning, so. I also wanted to say on behalf of the school committee, congratulations on your directorship. And I'm so proud of you and Ava for putting yourselves out there, you know, and seeking more leadership opportunities.
Thank you.
And representing Neshoba.
Yep.
Yeah, putting Neshoba on the map as student leader organization, so that's cool, Ryan.
That's great. I should probably also mention that as our senior representative, Ava will be representing Neshoba at District Day, the Capitol, at the invitation of Senator Kennedy, so she'll be there as Neshoba's representative this year. So we think that's a great honor for our school committee representatives to see governance go on the state house.
It's a great event. I take kids every single year, and it's really cool to watch. I think this actually might be the first year, it's no longer virtual. So it had become virtual for a few years, so having the kids all get to go back to the Capitol, the governor will speak.
Yeah.
So it'll be fun. So, awesome. So great, thanks, Ryan. So as always, if you have places to go, feel free, but if you want to stay, we'd love to have you. So over now to the Superintendent's Report.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Thank you to the committee this evening, for the public and for our guests that are here today. A few announcements before we get into the meat of today's meeting. First, in your packet is the second update from the Aspen Valley Collaborative is required. You get four updates throughout the year from the collaborative. This update summarizes the various programs within Aspen, has some costs of those programs in there, and highlights some of the students that are in those programs. I would encourage you just to read that to become an educator on the Aspen Valley Collaborative, and how they support all the member districts, and even non-member districts that send students there. The next piece, the Tri-County Superintendent's Association Legislative Breakfast will be held on February 28th, and I hear that we're going to be attending in Milford. Madam Chair, I would really, if you can represent our committee and join me, I'd appreciate that. If not, certainly if we can find a representative from the committee to join me at that breakfast, this is going to be one of those critical moments. We've been queuing up our conversations in the Massachusetts Superintendents to engage with our legislators around the funding structures of our schools, and how we need to be thinking about supporting budgets when rising costs are outpacing the funding of our school systems from a state level. And so the legislative platform for MSAS is nearly finalized and nearly public, so I will be bringing that platform to the committee, so you will know the points which we are lobbying our state legislators on in this legislative session. So more details to come on that, but I do believe it's nine o'clock in Milford location, I can't remember, so forgive me on that.
Okay, it's in the calendar.
There's a second breakfast, the Worcester County Superintendent's Association. Yes, I get the pleasure of sitting on a couple of different round tables. Tri-County is Worcester, Middlesex, and Norfolk Counties, and Worcester County is just Worcester County alone. And so we also have a legislative brunch, that is for superintendents and legislators, so I will be attending on our behalf on February 13th, and we'll be taking the same talking points to that event as well. I do know, having engaged with all of our legislative representatives, that they all support educational funding and take our needs to the state house to debate, with Senator Kennedy participating on the Education Committee directly, but there's many stakeholders to engage with, and like anything in every budget season, there's a lot of competition for our legislators' minds when it comes to making decisions around budgets. So we're going to talk more about that throughout the budget process tonight, but I just wanted the committee and our community to understand that we are engaged, and we're having conversations with the people that pull the purse strings for public education. The last announcement that I have for tonight, I want to reserve the honor to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Lor Friend, to present an announcement regarding our eighth grade math teacher, Ms. Jacqueline Mataria. So I'll turn it to Assistant Superintendent Friend.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. I would like to invite Ms. Jacqueline Mataria to the table to be recognized. Jackie.
Here.
She asked me if she should prepare anything, so are you ready to present?
That would take you down. I know you would.
So thank you for joining us this evening, and thank you for, to your colleagues for joining you as well. Cecilia Sullivan, colleague, eighth grade colleague, Ms. Erica Carr, colleague, and of course, Principal O'Shea. Thank you for joining, Ms. Mataria. So I'm going to formally acknowledge you. So we have the privilege of recognizing one of Neshoba's outstanding educators this evening, Ms. Jacqueline Mataria, an eighth grade math teacher at the Luther Burbank Middle School. The committee may recall that Ms. Mataria was previously honored as a Massachusetts-level finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. This award is the nation's highest honor for educators in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and computer science. At the time, Ms. Mataria was recognized as one of only three STEM teachers recognized at the state level. Well, on January 13th, it was announced by the White House that Ms. Mataria has now been selected at the national level to receive this prestigious honor. Congratulations. This honor and recognition was established in 1983, and is the highest award that a K through 12 math and science teacher can receive from the US government. Awardees are selected through a rigorous process, with a panel of distinguished mathematicians, scientists, and educators, both at the state and national levels, evaluating nominations before making recommendations to the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy. Teachers are chosen based on their excellence in the classroom and their dedication to advancing STEM education. As Ms. Mataria's former principal, I had the privilege of writing a recommendation on her behalf. Rather than paraphrasing that lengthy letter, I would like to share a portion of it with the committee to truly capture Ms. Mataria's impact. Quote, "Simply put, Ms. Mataria is special. She possesses those qualities any student, colleague, administrator, parent, or community member can only hope for in an educator. Not only does she bring out the best in all those around her, she demands the best. Known for pushing students to dimensions of thinking that to some may seem inconceivable, to Ms. Mataria it is just, quote, 'what we do.' In Ms. Mataria's classroom, everyone can achieve and do so at high expectation. No one ever forgets Ms. Mataria. On any given day, it is not uncommon for a student, former student, in reflection, to stop by, send a note extending thanks to Ms. Mataria for her influence, maybe not knowing it at the time, but recognizing it at a future date, for her unrelenting high expectations for helping students not only become a better math student, but a better thinker. That is a gift, a gift for our students that has no bounds. Congratulations, Ms. Mataria. We are deeply grateful for your unwavering dedication. May your light continue to shine brightly, guiding and inspiring all those fortunate enough to learn from you." To learn more about this achievement and accomplishment, we encourage our community to read the White House press release and the Superintendent's Report, and in a common congratulations to you. It's not like the White House.
The White House.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Wanted to take a picture of the show.
And with you too. Absolutely. Get back here.
And I do not want photobomb this.
Thank you.
Jackie, before you go, I just want to share with the committee just a little story. So we were in here that day, doing some professional work, and we were just about to start the meeting when the email came across to Jackie announcing that she would be representing Massachusetts at the White House, and the room exploded. Jackie had to leave the room, she was so overwhelmed at the moment, and, you know, Jackie, we, we all felt like we won, when you, when you stood up and you represented us, and we cannot be more proud of you. And that's for all the kids that have come across your way.
Thank you.
So thank you.
So, thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate the whole team coming in to support, so. So thanks for being here. Wonderful. I have a little teary eye. It's amazing to recognize good teachers, and you know, the recognition of one is just evidence that there are so many more in our public schools, and yeah. All right, guys, moving on from that, we have the updates, on the agenda it says Updates on Strategic Work, and it says the FY 2026 budget. Would you like to go into that now, or do you want to save that for after the new business items?
Madam Chair, if we can move to the new business first, I think it would warrant time afterwards.
So if there's no objection with the committee, we will visit the budget conversation as we get to the finance and operations element of the budget. Seeing no objection, we will continue on now to the next item, which is the Program of Studies Presentation, and Dr. Boyd is here to present to us. I'll let her do it.
I'd like to invite Dr. Boyd to come to the table and do the annual presentation of the Program of Studies. This Program of Studies is an informational presentation to all of you. It does not require a vote, but as the providers of the school district, it's important for you to know the Program of Studies that is being executed in our high school, and with that, I will give it to Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Thank you, School Committee, for allowing me the opportunity to present the updates to our Program of Studies for the 2025, 2026 school year. Pretty incredible. So you should have in your packet the change memo, which I will be referring to, and also happy to answer any questions that any members may have. Many of the changes were administrative in nature, such as updating the year and adding names of new members of the administration, address for NIESC, in our guidance section, and in several other areas, we amended the language around MCAS as a graduation requirement, including in language around competency determination. In other areas, you will still see MCAS listed, where students will take MCAS, in English, Math, and Science, as is still a requirement under school committee policy. We added in a separate section for Innovation Pathways as a general overview of the newly adopted Innovation Pathways programming, and so that providing families with a little bit of additional information right at the beginning of the Program of Studies. The one department where there was pretty much a large overhaul was in our Applied Arts Department, and that is directly related to the adoption of our Innovation Pathways. There were a lot of course amendments, shifts, removing some courses, adding some others, to align with the vision for our two currently adopted pathways, which are Business, Finance, as well as Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering. So you'll see programming and coursework that really directly aligns to those two pathways. There is a section on the Information Pathway, which is pending grant approval, so we're getting that in preparation. There are two courses, I'm proud to indicate, and they have a little Middlesex Community College logo. Two courses for dual or concurrent enrollment have been approved by Middlesex Community College, so we have that kind of burgeoning partnership with Middlesex, and we're going to continue to expand and explore other areas for our students to have dual enrollment opportunities. So excited about that, and the changes in our Applied Arts go over two pages of the change memo. So there was quite a lot there. Many of the courses were revised and/or created during Summer Academy, so I thank Assistant Superintendent Friend for that support, and then one additional exciting offering that advanced coursework is we are beginning a partnership with Project Lead the Way, so we're very excited about that. In English, we are continuing to hold off on offering our World Humanities, as English continues to look at its, its course trajectory, it's a dual kind of co-taught class between Social Studies and English, so that will not be offered for next year as we continue to look at our course offerings. We amended some course titles to better reflect the experience within, within the courses for our students, and then there were two classes that were removed, Propaganda and Censorship, Senior Elective and English Comp 101. The Propaganda and Censorship was removed for low enrollment, students just were not signing up for the class, and then same thing with the Comp 101, and that also was a dual enrollment with Quinn-Sigma and Community College, and that relationship proved to be a little bit more challenging for the high school to maintain because of increased costs to participate in the program from Quinn-Sig. They have increased their fees pretty exorbitantly, and then also set a limit on the number of students who could take the class. So we're feeling that a partnership with Middlesex is more beneficial for us at this juncture. No changes to ELL. In Fine and Performing Arts, there were some revisions to course descriptions to be more inclusive. Music Production 2, as Mr. McCarthy continues to expand that programming and offering students different avenues for creativity behind the curtains, not in front of the curtains. And then we are beginning an exploration of some of our electives, and you'll see this in science as well, moving to every other day for a year instead of semester-based to open up student ability to take those classes. In particular, students on, who are perhaps receiving services, and those services are every other day, so we're looking and starting, starting every other day for a year in music, as well as some science, science electives, and taking a look, we'll be looking at the data, and then perhaps expanding that, but starting first in music and in science. Adding in a technical theater class as well, because students have expressed an interest in technical theater. In math, the one change is to change course sequence for our Honors Level and Accelerated Level of ninth and 10th grade, the course progression, so starting Geometry in ninth grade, and then Algebra II in 10th grade. That will 100% allow for a smoother transition into pre-calculus in the 11th grade. We're seeing gaps, it's too long a time from Algebra II in ninth grade to pre-calculus in 11th grade, with geometry in the middle. Bless you, Leah. There are gaps in students' knowledge, they, they don't retain, they're not retaining, and so changing up the sequence will afford our students a better experience in pre-calculus. In our science, some slight changes related to MCAS, students will take instead of must, and then removing our AP and Honors Chemistry from the Grade 12 course sequence, we're just generally not seeing that this is a course sequence that students follow. Obviously, if there are any students who move in who might need this, obviously exceptions to the rule, but as a, you know, as a, just generally, it's, it's not a course sequence that students follow. In our two-year Biology class, we're shifting that to be a two-year co-taught sequence for Biology and Physical Science. In our Honors Biology and Honors Chemistry, a shift from five to six credits. Our discovery, after kind of looking at study hall numbers, is the five-credit classes create this weird blip in a student's schedule that block them out of electives, and create a weird, like a five-day-a-week study hall, because those two additional classes, the labs meet two out of the eight days, so it does, it follows no pattern and creates barriers in student schedules, and the additional lab time is definitely something that is, that is valued. And then here's that change, Science Semester Electives to every other day for a year, those are junior, senior electives, and again, we're going to monitor this, and the intent is that it'll, it'll increase student access to those classes, and if we think about it, music and science could nest nicely together, where before there have been barriers to participation, so we're really trying to remove barriers. This could flow into additional courses, additional subject areas like Social Studies, but right now, the US government and politics will be offered first semester, we'll take a look at how those every other day courses work in those other, in music and in science. In our Special Education Department, we're removing the Math Standards Grades 9, 10 class, and moving over to a co-taught model for grades 9 and 10, instead of more of a sub-separate, a sub-separate class. Our transition to Independent Living, that's our TIL class, based on the, the subject nature of the class, the proposal is to change to a Pass-Fail, and then offer that class every other day for the year instead of a semester, also nesting nicely in with science, as well as music, and then amending MCAS language from our Special Education Programming Descriptions. There are no changes in Wellness at this juncture, and then for World Language, removing the college preparatory level in our French, German, and Spanish IV, it does reflect how the courses are currently run. The levels are collapsed at advanced course, at the level four for French, German, and Spanish, so the college preparatory designation does not make sense. Adding, adding an Honors, an Honors Level for French and German I, which brings that, those two courses and languages in line with what's happening in Spanish, and then adding in German for Heritage Speakers, which was a very successful pilot this year. At the end of the Program of Studies, we're adding in a course for our Innovation Pathways. It's called Pathways to Success: Career Exploration and Preparation. This is our Capstone Project and Internship Course that is required for the Innovation Pathways. And then our EMT Course Description, the changes there reflect a change in how the program is organized and being run, with the EMR Course first, then the EMT Course in partnership with Harvard for Year One. So it reflects those changes in our EMT coursework, and those are the changes to the Program of Studies.
Thanks, Dr. Boyd, and that is a sizable amount of work, no doubt.
And I want to just take a moment to offer my gratitude, deep gratitude, to all of my department chairs for their hard work, and very thoughtfully and thoroughly, we went through a really rigorous collaborative process, and it would not have been done... and it would not have been done without their hard work and the teachers in their department. So it was really a lift.
Fantastic. I have a couple of questions, but anybody else have any questions? Shandor.
First, this to Colin. It was wonderful reading this and seeing the breadth and depth of the program. Seems like a lot of great offerings. And as a tech guy, I particularly appreciate that. I do think there might be a small little error in the prerequisites for AP Computer Science A in the chart on page 20, because it doesn't seem to make sense.
If you catch anything like that, please let me know because my Secretary Marcia and I will be making those edits. So can you point me in that, so page 20?
Page 20, it's near the middle, AP Computer Science A. It says Engineering Drawing Part 1, necessary requirement. And the description seems to be talking about other classes.
Okay. Thank you for catching that.
What happened with Shandor said about the breadth of the courses? It's really exciting. I have a question about the switch with the math courses. Geometry first and Algebra 2. What happens with Algebra 1?
Students who would still be recommended for Algebra 1 will still take Algebra 1. Right now, the course switches, only those students who in 9th Grade would be, are recommended to take Geometry. The switch will be, or sorry, Algebra 2. The switch will be they'll take Geometry and then move to Algebra 2. Students taking Algebra 1 will take Algebra 1, then Geometry, and then Algebra 2.
I'm sorry, I feel very dense right now. The change, or currently, kids right now, they take, they might take Algebra 1 in 8th Grade. And then they, freshman year, they were taking Algebra 2, right?
Yes. And so the switch is any student recommended currently who, any student recommended to take Algebra 2, they'd be taking Geometry instead of Algebra 2. So that the sequencing just makes more sense because there's a loss of learning is what Mr. Malborne and members of my Math Department have seen from taking Algebra 2 in freshman year. Those students who are potentially, who are recommended for it, then switching over to Geometry, which...
Is different.
Is different. And I'm not a math person. But then switching back to Algebra 2, or sorry, to Precal. There's a lot of reteaching that has to take place. Whereas the other sequencing, the time is closer. So there's less, there's less of a learning loss, if you will.
Okay, that makes sense. So you just want to get Algebra 2 closer to Precal?
Yes. That's the short answer, I should say. Yeah, that's, yeah.
I had a couple of questions. One, can you just re-explain the Middlesex partnership? What courses and who teaches them and where do they take them?
I'm glad you asked that. So if you take...
This is, by the way, an awesome opportunity for our kids. It does have some complexities to it, though, especially with scheduling that rotates.
I might have printed the wrong version of this. So I'm going to say Tech Essentials for the Modern World is one course that has been approved for Middlesex Community College. Credit Dual Enrollment or Concurrent Enrollment. And the way that, the way that Middlesex Community College kind of runs their approval for dual enrollment is that our staff, and in this case, Bridgette Hannigan and Stavros Andriopoulos, needed to share our syllabus, the syllabus for the classes that we were considering, as well as the curriculum guide. Teachers had to submit their resumes for consideration. And then Middlesex Community College, it's by department. So their department head, along with someone in more their central office equivalent, took a look at credentials at the course description and took a look at their own courses to see if there was a match. And then they give approval. And what's the beautiful thing about it is that our teachers will be teaching those courses for dual enrollment credit in our school day. So a barrier that we saw with other partnerships was they required their staff to come in and with a rotating schedule. That often doesn't work. Or there's a requirement that their staff, they're not even in consideration, that our staff would be qualified. The Tech Essentials for the Modern World, I believe it's that one. What's also is really wonderful is that is one of, not only one of the foundational classes for our Innovation Pathways, our ninth, so our 9th graders in the Innovation Pathways will be able to take that class and earn dual enrollment credits as a 9th grader. Because what we're offering even at the 9th grade is as robust, if not more than what they're offering at Middlesex, which is pretty cool. So it is, it's a process that is multi-stepped, but fairly straightforward. I will say that it does vary department to department. We looked at attempting to get our Accounting class. We have an articulation agreement with Quinn-Sig at that. And we were looking to get dual enrollment credit. But we don't have a staff member who has a master's in accounting. So they will often look at credentials. But the two that we have approved are 100% approved. Our students can take them. There is, there's a small, there's a fee if they want dual enrollment credit. I don't think the Accuplacer is a requirement any longer, and our staff teach them. And a student who takes the class does not have to be dual-enrolled. They can take the class just to take the class. And that was another issue with the Comp 101. Every single student had to be dual, take it for dual enrollment, even if they didn't want to. And so at this case, students have options.
Who goes to Middlesex?
Yes.
Fantastic. Any other questions on the Program of Studies?
Yeah, I have some questions about the Science, changes to the Science Program of Studies. So it looks like one of the changes is eliminating AP Chemistry?
No.
Oh, did I misunderstand?
So if you look at the chart, basically, Chemistry is typically an 11th grade class. And so it's just removing it from the 12th grade typical trajectory because most of our students, even students who move in, they're not taking it in 12th grade. If there is an exception, a student had, you know, from a move, someone who moves in from another school or another district or another state and wants to take AP Chemistry or Honors Chemistry senior year, they haven't had the ability to. We make those individual decisions. But as a sort of a general rule of trajectory, the student's typical pathway, we're not seeing that any students take Chemistry in 12th grade.
Got it.
Right, so not removing it at all.
I was drawn to the red AP Chemistry, but now I see...
No, it's in the senior only, yeah.
On the junior. My other question is, were there any changes to the prerequisites for the Science classes because, that I'm aware of? Okay.
No, I don't think, I don't think Ms. Pierre brought forward any changes to prerequisites.
I'll follow up with you separately on that because it's a pretty specific question.
Okay.
Thought I noticed a change, but it's not highlighted.
Happy to.
The last question I have is this partnership with Middlesex. Will that open up opportunities for seniors who, their schedule limits what AP classes they are able to take? Like, would that allow students who couldn't take AP, AP Language class because it conflicts with an AP Science or Math class to take advantage of doing that through Middlesex? Or is that...
No, no, it's course-specific. And we wouldn't look to get dual enrollment for AP classes. Those get college credits depending on how a student does. So we're looking in other areas for advanced coursework for more students. So I'll give you an example. Our, and I, this is one idea, but one idea we are exploring through our English Department is potentially our American Lit class, right? All of our juniors take American Lit. Is there an opportunity for a dual enrollment partnership? We don't know. We haven't gone through the steps yet. But could there be an opportunity for an American Lit to be a dual enrollment? For an example, as an example. We're looking at potentially, I'm not sure, statistics may be one. So we had an early meeting with Bridgette Hannigan, who went through the approval process for the two classes in the Applied Arts area. The other department heads and myself sat with her and walked, she walked us through the process that she went through, she and Stavros. So we are, we're now making steps to reach out to their respective department heads within Middlesex to start that dialogue.
Any other questions on the Program of Studies?
I have one final question, and it has to do with the MCAS component. Can you guys help us understand where we're heading? And this is a very big question, so maybe it's for another meeting. But can you help us understand the graduation requirement around MCAS and what we're going to do with that?
So right now, all of our graduates, our future graduates in the class of 2025 have all taken MCAS, which was a graduation requirement by this date at the time. They were 10th graders. And I can happily report that every single senior has passed MCAS. So we're not worried about that. My understanding is that MCAS still lives in the School Committee Policy as a graduation requirement. So all of our, all of our seniors are in really good shape to graduate. The shift in language in the, at the beginning of the Program of Studies referenced competency determination, which comes from the change in the law. And local districts identify what those competency determinations are. And right now, it's outlining all of coursework that's required as well as MCAS. That's our local competency determination. All of our seniors have met that.
Madam Chairman, I have a...
Please.
So this is something that we're discussing in superintendent circles as well and engaging with the Governor's Office, the State Department's offices, and announced the forming of a commission that is going to be looking at competency determination for statewide competencies. We don't want to get in a scenario where school districts are competing over whose competency determinations are tougher than others. And so we know we need to develop a statewide standard for competency determination. So that being said, when we look at Policy IKF, our current policy, in that policy, it does reference that a passing score on MCAS is required. So that still stands even though the law was removed because we adopted that into the policy. So that still stands for us. And as Dr. Boynton said, all of our students have met that. So that gives us a little bit of breathing room. I spoke with Ms. Vessels. I'm going to bring this topic to the Policy Subcommittee as an informational topic. But it is something that we're going to want to come back to this committee with a recommendation for how we phrase that policy for the future. And at the same time, we're watching the state. So we may find ourselves in a place where we have, for lack of a better term, make placeholder policy while that law is being developed.
Alita, would you put this in the parking lot? Competency determination, just so we don't, not that you would forget, Kirk. It's a big one, but just so I don't forget.
I'll be joining Policy Subcommittee on the 5th?
6th.
The 6th of February to begin the conversation. We won't come out of that meeting with a recommendation. It's going to be a time to sort of set down the work that's in front of us and what we need to do. I do have to say, our IKF policy is well-written and flushes out all the courses. So we're in a much better place than other school systems across the state that are looking to add pieces to their policy now because we have to demonstrate that students are meeting the standards in critical courses that were the equivalent courses to what was required on those MCAS tests that they were required to pass under legislation before the law was changed. So we stand in a good position. So I don't think this is going to be a controversial topic for us, but it is worth it, will need to be done, so we have it defined.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a final question? Is the requirement still, so all of our students will still take the Biology, MCAS?
English and Math.
English and Math. And our policy states that they must pass those three, get a passing grade on each of those three MCAS tests?
No, it says specifically a passing score on the MCAS.
A passing score.
Right, so a proficient score. Is that the right term?
No. A passing score is not proficient. A passing score is anything that's above the warning category. So in the Needs Improvement category, that is considered a passing score.
So what is, clarify, what is, what is the correct language for that in our policy?
A passing score on MCAS. So MCAS lives in our policy. So in other words, even though the voters voted MCAS requirement out of the legislation in November, it still exists in the Soba Regional School District because it's codified in our policy.
So my question is, if that is the case, that that is written into our policy going forward, do we need to have that clearly stated somewhere front and center where everybody knows that kids, from the Nishova perspective, passing the MCAS has not gone away just because the law changed?
Correct. And we'll be updating our community through the column of that effect. So this is an informational update for our community that we'll be giving.
As a follow-up, as a, to the community updates, does this, does this get, the new Program of Studies get shared out with families at the end of each year? Like the summary of the changes and stuff?
Awesome, thank you.
And with course selection about to get underway, this is the main tool.
Our aim is to have this on our website and email to families on Friday, by Friday. Take a look at the correction that Shandor identified. I want to make sure that we take care of that. And then we do print about 300 copies. Every single 8th grader gets a hard copy to bring home to their families. And then there are a few extras we leave in each middle school. And our counselors have hard copies as well. We have a few extra for any new families coming in, students transfer. We like to have a few of those, so.
Thanks for all that hard work. We appreciate it, Dr. Boynton.
Thanks, everyone.
For being here. All right, guys, our next matter of business is going to ask for a vote from you because we have a couple of changes on our Dear J Advisory. And Jackie is going to give us a little bit of background and then we'll share with you what we need your vote on.
Thank you. So in June of 2024, we appointed an Advisory Board of 11 members to continue to support the district and school committees' work and commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And the nature of that group is ever-evolving. And it is a, it's a really important commitment. And individuals who are appointed, who recognize that they may not always be able to meet that commitment, have since stepped down from their position. As an Advisory Board, they're required to maintain a particular number of members in compliance with open meaning laws. So we have three individuals who have stepped forward to fill vacancies. And I can tell you who those people are if you would like.
Do you mind if I have the cord for a moment? And I'll just plug this, it's already up there. I have it fast. Can you refresh that for me?
Oh, no, it's refreshed there. I have mine. So any names that are crossed off are people who have withdrawn their position. And then three individuals, it's actually Shevron. So it's S-H-E-R-V-O-N.
S-H-E-R-V-O-N?
Yep.
Can you just roll it for me, Alita? Just that you can see that there are a couple higher up there.
So anyone with their name struck out has, is no longer participating. And then the three members at the bottom, the three individuals have put their names forward for consideration and appointment by the School Committee this evening. So we'll be looking to seek your approval for these three people. Two parents slash former parents. Two parents slash former parents, the current parents, past parents, and then a former student of the school district.
Which one is the former student?
Owen.
Do you guys have any questions before we make a motion? Scott.
I don't see Lancaster representation. Is there anything we can do about that?
I would say that anyone who is interested in being considered should put their name forward and reach out to me and/or Leah, especially because it is the end of January, and we'll be looking for appointing members in June of this year for next year's continued work, so.
And so we had a rather lengthy conversation with Dear J about what is the right size, and they were confident that the original 11 was the right size to do the work, to manage the subcommittee work, et cetera. So as you guys can, you can do math, we have four who have stepped down, three who have stepped up, and so therefore, we have one vacancy. And perhaps our Lancaster reps can spread the word that we could use some Lancaster representation, although I am of the mind that this work doesn't necessarily need that to be legitimate, but it's always good to have representation. I wonder if there are any more questions? Jackie, might I make a motion to appoint these new members?
Yeah, I motion to approve the appointment of three new advisory board members to Dear J, Chevron, Lori, and Owen.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in paper. Very good. Anybody opposed?
Anybody that's standing?
Did you vote?
I did vote, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, everybody, thanks for that, and please note to the community that we do have one vacancy still on Dear J. If anybody's interested, anybody from Lancaster especially, please let me know or let Dr. Jackie Reiner know, or either or. All right, so moving on the agenda to the next item here, our favorite, I'm going to hand it over to Amy Vessels, because we have a first policy reading. And I think, as always, guys, the way to do this is to explain to Amy anything, well, first of all, Amy's going to give us a summary of anything that was substantive, and then you guys can provide your thoughts, and she will go back to the subcommittee to manage it.
I don't really need to say this, huh?
Fantastic. Nothing substantive?
Nothing that we, no, nothing that we hashed out, no.
Any commentary on the red line versions? Go for it, Scott.
So one should be relatively uncontroversial, the other one's going to be a little bit more involved. So JIC is a Charlie Eddison Frank A is an apple. So I actually looked at the master general laws that this is referenced to, and the first one is actually a definition of hazing. We don't have a definition of hazing, and I think we should include it.
Thank you. Anything else that you want to?
Just that, just on that one, that's the only thing I wanted to talk about. The other one is JIH. This one had me a little more concerned as far as like due process and the like. So with respect to like searches by staff, I don't think it says anything about what staff can make searches, like, is there a certain level of staff that needs to be, you know, only principals can do it, or, you know, like, who gets to make the decision of who does the search? And, you know, I think of like, you know, the judicial system, if you want to do a search, you need to get a warrant. I don't know what the equivalent of a warrant would be in a school's district, like if you need the superintendent to sign off when you're doing a search. I just feel like there should be more due process before searches are conducted.
So there's a Supreme Court case that articulates that all searches must be, quote, reasonable. That is the equivalent, which is, you know, we could debate that. But the who is a much more important question, and I wonder if the superintendent has any opinions on that?
I think what we do on Mr. Powell's questions is just get direct legal guidance on that. I think that's the way to handle, you know, your question, because it would be, who is the designated school official that would do that? Any school official would fall under those protections. But I think Mr. Powell's speaking to our local procedure on that, so.
I don't have an opinion on who it should be, I just think it should be more clear about who is allowed to and who is not allowed to.
Yeah, we'll come forward with legal counsel on that and bring that back to the group. We'll look to bring that back if an expeditious might be able to do that for the Monday meeting.
Got it, Jackie.
Could we also, so the way, if we're, if you're going to go to that length, to consult, I think it would be good for you to ask that the first top section of searches by staff that specifically referenced school lockers, and that would be, I think, part of, like, is it only the lockers that were?
But also records as automobiles.
Book, backpacks, pockets.
Bags, yeah, bags.
Right, and so like this, this is a good point of how policy, what is the spirit of policy, and then from an operational implementation standpoint, like, what would that look like? So I would, I would want it to be more clear, I guess, if we're going to get legal counsel as to what falls under property.
Thank you. I have another. Got you. Law about reducing policy. Further down there, it says that, number one, under the interrogations, where law enforcement officials questioning students during the school day, and it says the school principal or does we will be present when possible? And I, I'm not comfortable with that. I feel like that should be, there's, and I guess you could say if the student is 18, but if, for the vast majority of our students are minors, and I don't feel comfortable with that potential of them being interrogated without another adult there, I would feel more comfortable if it said a principal or their designated will be present, end of story.
I actually have more, a bigger concern with this particular item, which is, we should be taking all efforts to not have interrogations take place during school hours. Like, I would say only under any emergency circumstances, like if there's a bomb threat or something like that, that you have interrogation. Otherwise, there's no reason for law enforcement to be conducting interrogations during school hours. So I don't know what, if anything, we can put in the policy around this, but I am very concerned with the school being the representative for students during an interrogation. I, I think we should go to all efforts possible to, for the school not to be the representative of students.
I wonder too, how this crosswalks with the SRO contract?
Correct.
Because we did a lot of work on this last year.
Somebody on this committee was very adamant about one provision in the SRO agreement.
But we, we worked it out. You worked it out.
No, we didn't, no, this is the policy, this is, this reflects, excuse me, I didn't recognize, I'm sorry.
Go for it, go for it.
This policy right here is a mirror image of what is in the SRO. And I concur with my colleague Ms. Park and my colleague Ms. Stowe, that I don't believe under any circumstance, I don't care if they're 18 or not, it says right there, schools have legal custody of the students. Now, I don't know that the school actually reaches the level of what's considered legal custody of commonwealth of Massachusetts, but assuming we operate in the same realm as legal custody, I think it's imperative on us to look very carefully at this provision. I don't think any student, under any circumstance, should be questioned by police absent their parent and/or legal representation. And with all due respect, I see that Dr. Boynton's left, as an attorney, I don't want a school administrator advocating for my child. I would want the parent or their principal. I know this will cause some wrinkles with the SRO, with the chief of police in Bolton, but we did, we talked about this a long time during, during the SRO, and I left it that this is now the matter of public record, parents should be aware that if their child is in the school and the police officer, which is to interrogate, excuse me, interrogate them, that our policy is that they can be interrogated absent parent being present and legal counsel, so.
All right, so we're going to clearly bring this entire thing to legal counsel and ask their opinion.
Yeah.
Yes, and I'm going to be an opportunist, if you don't mind. So I didn't prepare notes on this, so I will speak memorably, so I don't overspeak. A message is going to be going out to our community on Friday. It just so happens, I received legal guidance just this afternoon from our attorneys regarding the presence of ICE officials if they were to enter into campus in order to interview, detain an individual, whether it be student or staff. And what is clear is that they do not have the authority to do that, that under FERPA, we protect the student records or the employee records, and that we are the custodian to that. So our staff have been informed at the buildings that if any law enforcement official, local to federal, were to approach the building at those requests, that we do not provide them that access, and that they are to refer that to the superintendent's office. Because the only examples that our attorneys have advised us where that would be allowed is if a judicial warrant were presented. And that's where things get a little wiggly, because not all warrants are judicial warrants, which is why they would need to be forwarded to us so that our attorneys could review them. So this is a hot topic, and we'll be taking it to our attorneys to give guidance on this policy as well.
Jesse's also putting a presentation out for school committee members on Friday at 10:00 a.m. for anyone who's interested in attending, it's a Zoom.
Madam Chairman, before we move on, and not to belabor the point, but may I ask this question rhetorically? Because you raised the issue of perhaps having our legal counsel look at this policy, just looking at the interrogation by police portion of this policy. I will ask you rhetorically, you may respond if you so choose, but why do we need the advice and consent of legal counsel on this particular issue? The right to counsel is a fundamentally protected constitutional right. With all due respect, I don't need our legal, our attorneys charging the district to tell me that, we all know that. If it's the will of this committee that, if the, because we have a police officer, we pay a police officer to be in our high school. So if it's the will, I mean, if it's the will of this committee that when it comes to criminal investigations and criminal interrogations, if the will of this committee is that no child in the district, no matter what their age is, will be interrogated by a police officer absent the presence of their attorney, excuse me, absent the presence of their parent or their attorney? So I've been clamoring for this since the SRO, but this is the policy, and this reflects what's in the SRO.
Yes, I know you said it rhetorically, but I will just say that my inclination is to ask the question only because I don't know what I don't know. And working in a school and having been involved in scenarios of the sort, I don't want to tie hands in a way that is through my own ignorance. So that's why I would look to ask, just to make sure there isn't something that I'm missing, especially in this time of, you know, grave threat, so. I would ask, I would think that the committee would want to get legal counsel's opinion on this policy, and this policy has been, this is what MASCE says it should be, and I want to know why.
May I, Madam Chairman?
Please.
I think the conversation with the council is more than that. It's not a review of the policy. It's a review of the questions that this committee brought up regarding the policy, that is the discussion for the attorney. So thank you for Attorney Gleason to put his point into the record, because that is what we will search for validation on from our legal counsel, so that we are on strong footing moving forward.
I just, because I thought long about that, too, about the piece about the effort made to contact the student's parents or guardian, and my first thought was that the parent must be informed before a child is involved in anything. And then as I thought about it, I thought, okay, well, what's the reason why an interrogation must, might be happening, and that is, we're at an emergency if that is happening? So then if we are at an emergency level, how do we do our best to make sure that those that are responding can do their job and protect our children at the same time? Which is why I landed on an adult, you know, the principal or their designated, because it saves the time. But in the bigger scheme of things, right, it really should be a parent.
Okay, so I think we know what to do. Anything else in the first reading? Shonda?
I just throw out there, policy ECAF, the one about security cameras, seems kind of related in terms of providing law enforcement access to stuff, and so.
What is it? What are the letters, Shonda?
Is that today or is that a previous?
It's the current policy, I believe.
That's not in the first reading?
Correct.
We haven't passed it because we haven't talked about it again. We got some more confirmation from legal counsel, and we haven't discussed it yet.
And so on the agenda?
Well, what I'm just saying is that in, in discussing this one, we should make sure that the policies make sense philosophically with each other, that's all.
And that's on the list of things that Kirk was going to have to get back to?
He got back to me about, and we need to meet again and talk about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we did, we did get that back, and we can discuss that.
Okay, but it's not on the agenda right now?
I'm not trying to discuss it now, I'm just saying, if we're seeking legal counsel, we should look back into the same conversation.
Okay. Got it, Jackie.
Yeah, and part of the same conversation is that interrogation is kind of a very particular word, but there are situations and scenarios where schools are in a unique position to maintain the health and safety of children who are being received in autopsy situations in the Department of Children and Families, certainly is responsible for that, but I could see situations where there may be some interaction with law enforcement and wanting to make sure that that wouldn't be a barrier, that a parent has to be present, especially if that parent could be a perpetrator.
Got it. Any other things on the first reading?
I just have one. It's policy JIC, which is student discipline.
Okay.
And in that policy, it talks about each principal shall include prohibited actions in the student handbook. And I am going to, I know that there's resistance and not wanting to rewrite policies that MASCE has written, but I really think that kids do not do prohibited actions, you know, the kids that are acting out behaviorally are doing so because they are unable to make better choices. So that telling children what to not do does not tell them what to do. And kids that are having trouble making good choices behaviorally need to be told what things are okay to do. So my plug for that is tell students what to do, tell them what you want them to do. We may have to legally put in the prohibitions as well, but rather than telling them what not to do and then let them guess about what it is that you really do want them to do, which is what kids who are behaviorally struggling often are doing, let's just tell them what we want.
All right, so that's something that you guys can discuss at policy.
Yeah, can I just throw something on there for that? There's some, like, the formatting is funky on that one. We didn't do all the switching for certain, like, pronoun use, and then also making sure that we're keeping the statement around who are the protected classes, like race, ethnicity, making sure that the, that statement at the bottom for the reporting is consistent with another policy where we talk about, I can't remember off the top of my head, but there was a particular policy where we, we just recently went over it and updated it with more information about just protected classes. I can't remember which policy.
We did, but that, we also got clarification on that recently, that that's being reverted back to the 2020 version. I think that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Maybe. Yep, we know about that, yeah.
Okay. Anything else that policy needs to consider? All right, as always, guys, thank you a gazillion times for taking all of that on. We're going to move the agenda now to the next item, jumping over to finance and operations. And if there is no objection from the committee, I'm going to ask that the E and B be actually moved to the third item on finance and operations, and we're going to start with the December operating budget report, and then move on to the budget update, finishing with the ending. Seeing no objection, let's do that, and I will turn it over to Kirk and Charles.
Great, I'd just like to introduce Mr. Ross McCarron, Finance and Operations Director, to go over the operating report.
Thank you, everyone. I know that we have more to come with regards to finance and operations, so I'll be brief with the operating report from December. Just to note, the salary differentials that we have within our schools make up a majority of that surplus that you see below is footnote number two. Also, we've signaled this to the school committee before that we likely will need to use circuit breaker. I don't see a position where we do not use additional circuit breaker during this school year to offset the costs that we're seeing. And a couple other things to note, facilities, obviously, the winter's really here, we've had snow removal happening, things like that, but you never know what happens with the rest of the year, whether temperatures. with the rest of the year, whether temperatures climb or go back down or we get more snow or not, but that's a projection, obviously. Also, the projection in the substitute line is noticeable because it is negative. If you recall from the budget workshop, we've made some adjustments for the FY26 budget that match our substitute usage more tightly over the last few years now that we're a little bit further away from COVID. So I think our projecting is better for FY26 with regards to that. So this was reviewed with Budget and Warrant Subcommittee already, and other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right, so I feel like we're heading now to the main event, which is our Budget Update, and Kirk has a good deal to share with us here.
We do, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. And Mr. McCarron, are you gonna?
I am going to use the clicker as soon as Masterson gets it to the slideshow.
Thank you. Well, since our last meeting, we'd like to update the committee on new information that we have been able to obtain since we last met. When we met two weeks ago, we painted a forecast update that included all asks. We had all asks in terms of what we would need to execute the program. Here they are, knowing and recognizing right from the beginning, the affordability of those asks was not realistic. And so we are now at the point of riddling back from that number so we can get to a budget number that is palatable for our towns while also maintaining a high-quality educational program for our students. And so what we're going to paint a picture for you tonight is the new information that we have, along with some of the thoughts we have on how to reach those target numbers. And I will hand it over to Mr. McCarron so he can walk us through those elements.
Thank you Superintendent Downing. So for those of you who've been on the committee for multiple years, we're going to follow a similar format that we do as we always present our budget updates post-budget workshop. To Superintendent Downing's point, there's always work to do after the budget workshop as we start to get in not only the governor's budget, but we start to think about where we need to be fiscally with our member towns. So we'll talk about the timeline, review what happened at the budget workshop, talk about governor's budget impact, then look at some other reductions. And there is a topic on excess and deficiency appropriation, as well as we'll provide a summary of where we're at. And then, as we always do, what are our still remaining unresolved factors moving forward to Budget Update Number Two. So here we are, our yellow is where we are tonight. We did receive the governor's proposed budget, Chapter 70, and all those required local contributions from Desi last week, so those are part of this today. The other piece you can see is that we're coming closer to focus on the next updates, as well as our joint FinCom and Advisory Meeting with the towns and the budget hearing, which is prior to the scheduled school committee vote on the 12th of March. So in a review of where we ended our budget workshop two weeks ago, the following figures were the proposed operating budget and associated assessments to the member towns. At that time, as we've mentioned, we did not have the governor's proposed budget with state aid or the confirmed foundation enrollment, which impacts our assessment to our towns. And we have done the adjustments for this evening. These were the unresolved factors we ended our last meeting on at the budget workshop. So just in brief, we have received the governor's proposed budget with all those pieces. We've updated our foundation enrollment and therefore our five-year rolling average for assessment, and then also the minimum local contributions. Insurance and benefits, I did receive the rate ranges from our representative from the Maya Trust and for the trust for health insurance, the rate range is 9.9% to 19.9% for active health insurance for FY26. We will get our final rate for the district in the next couple of weeks. I anticipate having that by the next budget update, but I do want to remind the committee that we plugged that number at 12%. That's higher than we had estimated in any other previous budget workshops, and we're now hearing that that would be on the low end of the rate range. For my colleagues from other districts and even our town members who are also in the trust or in other methods, they're hearing the same thing. So there's a couple of factors at play, but obviously we will receive that in the next couple of weeks. The excess and deficiency certification, we don't have that certification yet from the DOR. As the committee remembers, we did switch our auditing firm this year. They prepared it back prior to the deadline. We're in the queue. Department of Revenue asked some questions with our new auditors that we reviewed together, sent back the answers, and now we're just waiting for our final update from them. So into the governor's proposed budget and talking about the impact. So I just want to do a quick review of how the regional agreement works with regards to the budget. So each year, Desi puts out with the foundation enrollment, a required net school spending amount for every single school district. I am not aware of any school district that operates within their net school spending requirement. So part of that is the required contribution that each town needs to provide. That's a calculation that's done by the state relative to all sorts of factors. You may have heard the valuation factor brought up before. Two of our member towns are at the max. Lancaster is steadily increasing, and you'll see the result of that on their minimum contribution that's happening for FY26. So based on those required contributions, if there's any gap between those contributions with the state sets for net, for minimum net school spending, that's where Chapter 70 comes into play. So those totals add up to that net school spending. We also have our estimated revenues from things like our regional transportation reimbursement, our Medicaid receipts, charter school reimbursement, our investment income that we receive as we, you know, we keep our assessment in the municipal trust. So there's other things that add into what could help out with offsetting the budget with the revenue. The remainder is the variable assessment, and that's language that's agreed upon within the regional agreement. And so each time that the budget changes, we see a change in the assessment. So just to give you an update, these are the foundation enrollments confirmed by Desi last week. We were not too far off on our estimates plugged in from our October 1 date of this school year. And you can see the change in the operating assessment, though. So Bolton has gone up just a little bit based on their five-year rolling average. Lancaster is up almost three times as much as Lanca, or Bolton's increased, and Stowe is down. You can just look at the data on Stowe just to see. So back in FY23, they had 1,124 students in the system. Now there's 1,016. So here's a, just a quick chart on the changes to the required contributions as dictated by Desi. So Bolton's has gone up just over 370,000. Lancaster's has gone up 560,000, and Stowe's contribution has gone up just over 90,000. Our Chapter 70 state aid has gone up over 450,000. You'll note that over 230 school districts, and we're one of them, received the minimum per pupil increase this year, which was $75 per student. If you do quick math on our foundation enrollment in $75, this is more of an increase. The reason for that is that the FY25 number that we have in the budget was the governor's released Chapter 70 budget on the cherry sheet last year at this time. During the course of it going through the House, the Senate, and the final budget, which is not confirmed until July and August, that number did increase. But again, we're working from budget projection to where we are today with the budget projection from the governor. So the reality is really from projected to now is $453,000. So along with funding comes cost when we receive our budget from the governor. So we are responsible for two things that are dictated by the state based on enrollment and school choice in other districts. So these are students from Lancaster, Bolton, and Stowe that might attend schools in other, or might attend school in other public schools. We've talked about this during the school choice process in the spring. I won't belabor that point. Also, our charter school students that attend, they also, we receive an assessment to pay for that as well, and you can see the increases here. So while the increase in revenue from projected at the workshop to now has increased, we also have to look at the fact that our expenses increased. So these numbers actually increased the operating budget to the number you see before you. So it's actually up just a little bit as of right now, but as you're aware, we're going to walk back some of these costs tonight. So here's sort of the impact to total revenue from the governor's budget. So our Chapter 70 aid, we have an increase in regional transportation and our charter school reimbursement. Again, though, you can see the difference between the increase in cost on charter and the charter reimbursement don't exactly match, so there's some onus on the operating budget. So the result that we have here is, again, there's a small uptick in the operating budget, but if you track from the budget workshop to this slide, the actual assessments to the towns decreased because more revenue came in from Chapter 70. So the next thing we look at after we receive that, are there any other places we can look at for non-salary reductions and any potential offsets within the budget? Again, offsets are using some.
Ross, can I just touch on that really quickly? I feel like it might be important to let people ask questions about all those mechanics.
True.
Before we start moving into the recent iteration.
Absolutely.
I think that's right. I think that's right.
Especially because so many of us are relatively new to the process. So Ross just walked us through how he builds his budget. Are there any questions around variable assessment, minimum local contribution? For the veterans here, maybe not, but anybody?
And then we'll remind the committee, but also the public out there, on our Finance and Operations public page, there's a video that explains how the budget is built through the regional agreement and has these factors in it as well. It's an excellent tutorial.
Anyone? Are you okay? All right, you're on a roll, Ross. Sorry I interrupted. Go ahead.
No, it's, I appreciate the pause. I'm aware there's new members on the committee, so thank you. Okay. So the first thing we look at is our non-salary reduction. So I met with each one of the principals, talked with our departments, and looked at what possible places, you know, can we look at as, you know, just next steps without major reductions per se to our operating non-salary budgets? Committee is aware when we run our per pupil, we really don't increase a whole lot because our population is, our enrollment is rather steady. Those levers and those sort of standards work really well for our K-8. And I will say that the department heads, and I said at the workshop, were very sort of straightforward this year with their requests. They're not looking for a lot of additions. As you're aware, there's the AP chemistry textbooks at the high school, but that's essentially it. So the first place we took a look at was teaching and learning, and our amazing assistant superintendent, or friend, brought forth some reductions to professional development and instructional software. These aren't major pieces that impact the overall operation of the teaching and learning department and the work that they do to support learning and teaching across the district, but there were some small areas we can do some programs and things like that. Within technology, we're pulling a reduction to computer hardware of $50,000. We do have some additional E-rate money that we have to use now. We can't roll it to next year, so what we'll do is we'll pre-purchase the staff laptop replacements according to our replenishment cycle this year so that they're ready to go for next year. And again, we'll, there's that reduction to computer hardware. It'll still be purchased, just a different source that's available now that we can no longer move forward within FY26. So with regards to facilities, we took a look at the new vehicle proposal for the van. We did reach out to the dealership to talk about what a lease structure would look like. It's not, you know, inexpensive to do a 36-month lease. However, it does reduce the impact of the operating budget this year for FY26, so that's been removed as we would pursue a lease. So some school-based non-salary reductions, and again, sitting with the principals. So for the high schools, some minor changes to their contracted services line through the main office along with office supplies and paper. I really could not look at their department budgets to look anywhere where we felt like there was any sort of major changes we could make at this point. Within Burbank, you're aware that there were requests for some larger musical instruments that are at their end. So I talked to Mr. O'Shea. We'll see what maybe could be done some other way and pursue that, but those were removed as well as some of the requests for some power tools, and we'll go from there. Center had, again, was really to the per pupil amount. There wasn't a lot of leverage there. We did look at the 504 plan line, which apply, you know, where we have money for necessary accommodations. There's been some students that have shifted to IEPs, so those are now absorbed by the special education budget, so therefore that would not be necessary within the 504 line. At the Hale Middle School, we looked at the talented youth subscription is not always needed, so without that definitely being needed, that was removed. There were some repair requests that were taken out. The engineering supplies were leveled to the other middle schools, and there was also an additional membership within the PD line, but we've held pretty tight on all professional development with the exception of $2,500 per building K-8, all coming out of the teaching and learning budget, so that was removed as well. Mary Rollinson, we removed the purchase of one of the tables requested, and the music festival cost that was in there, I spoke with this to McCarthy, it's not necessary because of the way that they're structuring that Great Road Music Festival, so we're moving forward there. And then over at Sawyer, again, just a small supply cost decrease. I do want to note for our non-salary site-based, our school-based budgets, our total budget proposed now for FY26 is only $7,000 over what was voted for for this year, and that does include $20,000 for the AP textbooks. So with the exception of that, we've reduced the non-salary budgets at the school-based level while maintaining the right amount of supplies and materials for our students in order to execute our educational program. So here's the summary slide of our non-salary reductions for teaching and learning, technology, facilities in our schools. The total reduction to the budget's about $174,000. So the next place that we look is our offsets. So the school committee is aware that we maintain revolving accounts for several things. We provide the revolving account update in October, actually it was November this year. So what we've taken a look at is a couple of things. So we're going to be getting more school choice tuition in. For FY26, it looks to be about 260,000 instead of the 165 that we received this year. So what we've done is we've increased our offset to the health insurance line by another $100,000. We're running an extended learning balance, and while I would not spend it all completely because you do want to have maintained some level of a balance, we do feel like we can use some of that to offset a teaching and learning item this year. There's a school choice balance because we backed away from using it when it was becoming sort of almost obsolete, but we still were able to maintain and build up a balance going back as far as like FY18, 19. So where we remain right now is we feel like we can, again, pull some of that money to offset the health insurance. And again, I would caution, it's a one-time use of something that's reoccurring, so that's just something to keep an eye on. The other piece is we feel like, based on the projections for where tuitions are at right now, and some news from the governor's budget and some news from our regional association representatives, that the circuit breaker is going to be better funded, particularly around transportation. We've talked about that. It used to be 75%, it backed down to about 58, and then it was 44% this year. So knowing that there's work to be done there and our costs are up this year, we feel like we can increase that another 200,000. So that would make the total circuit breaker offset for FY26 2 million dollars. But the total additional offset that we've added to the budget as of tonight is another $500,000.
Let's hold our questions until.
Yeah, I can pause right after this. So just, this is just a summary. So our total non-salary reductions is 174,000 with the offset total. So really, the budget reduction ends up being just over $670,000. Do you want me to cover this slide or you want me to pause right where I was?
One more.
One more? Sure. So here's the impact to the operating budget and the assessments. Again, this is where we're starting to see how you obviously bring down the operating budget and therefore bring down the assessments to the towns. And I can pause right there.
Okay.
Go back a couple slides where you talk about school choice.
Yes.
that into a fund, a school choice fund, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so, looks like here you're taking a hundred thousand dollars out of that fund to fund the budget as a revenue source. Where's the other hundred thousand dollars coming from? You've got two school choice lines here?
Yep. So the increase, so our FY twenty-five tuition in, as set by the state base and the number of students and the state level, and there's also a special education increment that could get built into that, so it's not always a straight five thousand dollars per. So, but to your point, Mr. Powell, so our, because we've increased slots, we now have more of that tuition in coming in.
So are you going to take all the tuition in and put it into the school choice fund, but now you're taking two hundred thousand out? Is that the key thing that's actually happening here?
So there's two things happening. One is that we last year don't, well, this, the current budget of the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we have coming into school choice this year, we're using a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of it to offset health insurance. Next year, when that raises to over two hundred and fifty thousand, we're going to use two hundred and fifty thousand. We had already put a hundred and fifty thousand dollar offset in the budget you saw on the workshop, so this extra hundred thousand dollars increases it to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
The other piece is there was a balance. So as the school district got further away and less students were, from the last time we approved school choice, there was less students there. We stopped using as much of it, and what happened is that balance stayed. Now that we have more coming in, and this would be, I'm noting it tonight, using a balance from a revolving is using one-time funds for an ongoing situation, and I'm, I'm being clear with that.
Right. So, a hundred thou-, the first hundred thousand, you think is recurring?
It is recurring.
Because of school choice.
Correct.
Second hundred thousand, we're going to have to find that again next year.
It, it would have to either be from another source, or we would have to see something happen with our health insurance, or another lever would have to be adjusted within the budget, correct?
Go ahead, Kirk.
Also, remember with school choice, we have two years in a row reopened school choice, so we've grown the number of collections that we've had in school choice. We'll be visiting that conversation again in April, and you'll get my recommendation on the number of seats that we'll owe. So what we'll be bringing in for school choice tuition next year will increase, assuming the seats that we're going to be opening up will increase our overall enrollment to choose school choice, because our goal was to be, to, to manage that and responsibly grow that to at least the point that we offset what we're paying for school choice out. And so, we're on the pathway to do that, and we're still on the pathway to do that with this methodology.
So again, before I turn it, uh, over to Superintendent Downing for the next section, I would just say, you know, non-salary, uh, costs are always at play as we receive feedback from the school committee about the direction of the budget. We continue to go back in, just because there's non-salary reductions presented tonight doesn't mean that that could be the final extent. However, like I've said, I think we're, we're budgeting pretty tightly at this point, um, especially within our schools, so, uh, I just want to make a note of that, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Downing.
Okay. So, I get to talk about the difficult part, and that's the salary reduction of employees in the school system. Um, we don't take this lightly, because when we're talking about salaries, we're talking about people. Um, we're going to start in the places with it are the new requests, because those are positions that don't, aren't being held currently, um, because they haven't been hired for. But they are, those requests are there for a reason, and as we look at these things, I'll explain those reasons as we go, go through them. So looking at the requested new positions that are, were in the budget, the first position was the float LPM that was presented by our nurse leader and director of health and, and safety, um, and as a position we've removed from the budget. We're exploring some potential alternatives for that in the, the future, but we pulled that position out. We pulled the senior technology support increase, which is a job responsibility increase, so we're going to continue to have to meet the requirements of those, the, the, the activities haven't gone away. The activities still have to happen, but they're going to have to be shared amongst the technology team in order to, 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 um, meet their goals. Uh, the MRE secretary that was requested to bring some balance, uh, was pulled back, the building operator for facilities, the academic tutors that Assistant Superintendent spoke about. You'll see here the new kindergarten section for Mary Rollinson, along with the instructional assistant there. We are cur-, I'm going to talk about this with a little bit of detail. We are currently in our kindergarten roundup, as I shared with you. Um, and, uh, our early childhood director, Kristen Ryan, uh, met with me the other day, and they've done a thorough collection of the census of our current preschool students and gathering of anticipated enrollment. We are down significantly in anticipated kindergarten students. So to date, we have forty-two students enrolled for kindergarten for next year for Mary Rollinson Elementary. That was as of today, and that's with all names on the census counted for, for any notifications that were given to us that were not on the census, and students that are enrolled in our preschools. So, we would need to have twenty-five more students in Lancaster come forward before the start of the new year to warrant a fourth classroom. This is lower, uh, by about ten students than the number we were at for Lancaster last year, and we ended up with three sections of kindergarten in, in Lancaster. So we feel at this time, um, we can safely pull those two positions because they were new requests since we have three sections of kindergarten in Lancaster currently. We also requested a section, uh, fifth grade section at MRE because they sit right on the threshold of our class size, um, policy of twenty-four per, per classroom, and they currently in the fourth grade have two classrooms of twenty-four and one classroom of twenty-five. That's today. And so, it would be exactly the same conditions at that grade level next year. Uh, we also asked for, uh, the fifth grade section at Center is an identical scenario to Lancaster, identical. And those classrooms, those grade levels started the year right at the threshold, but they picked up one or two students that took them to that seventy-three mark. The SLP, which is speech-language pathologist, forgive the acronym there, the speech-language pathologist position, uh, we're pulling back a portion of that position. Um, our director of student services, William Deman, and I met the other day, and we, uh, did some examination, could we deliver the IEPs and anticipated IEPs from kinder-, uh, pre-K evaluations, uh, that are on our horizon? Could we execute that by increasing one of our part-time employees to full-time? And that's the delta that you see. We can, so we've kept four tenths, but are returning six tenths in that ask to ensure that we can still deliver the speech-language pathologist, uh, positions. And then, uh, you'll see the insurance placeholder effect by removing those positions, uh, we would be able to remove that estimated dollar amount out of the budget, um, and that is a proportional, um, uh, amount based upon what our usage rates are in the district. Is it correct, Mr. Mulcahen?
Correct.
Okay. So before I go to the next set of positions, I want to pause at new positions and ask if the committee has any questions.
Well, I, I will go on the record here as saying, public comment this evening stated that these class sizes are not great. So I just want to voice that concern, that we are in a situation right now where our fifth grade teams at two of our schools are going to have class sizes of twenty-four and twenty-five. We have a third grade classroom where the same is true at Center School at least, and I know that, you know, this is happening in multiple areas of our school district. And so, the funding is a problem. I want everybody listening to know that this is not something that anybody at this table is happy about. All of us want our class sizes to be seventeen children, and fewer maybe. Um, so nobody in this room wants us to be this way, and I'm sure that no educator in Neshoba also wants it to be this way. So, we have a problem that is, I would argue, on the revenue side of things, where the state is not doing its job. I think, Ross, you said transportation is being reimbursed at forty-five percent?
Well, for special education transportation, that qualifies under circuit breaker. Uh, it previously used to be seventy-five percent, it was reduced to, I think, fifty-eight percent, and this year we're only receiving forty-four percent, uh, of eligible costs, so...
And so that, this is the line item that's escalating in cost?
Correct.
On top of it?
Correct.
So, it's incredibly frustrating for all of us, and I really do hope that our legislators see and hear that the burden cannot continue to be placed upon localities such as ours, where from an outside perspective, you might think that these towns are affluent, but at a certain point, the bank breaks, so, and especially on homes where they're fixing comes. And so, I want to just make sure everybody hears that, I think I speak for us all when, and you know, you guys are nodding heads, that this is not ideal, and that class sizes of twenty-four, twenty-five at a higher rate than normal is not what we want. And so, that said, I know that Kirk, you're going to now enter into an area where you're going to share with us where we have to make additional cuts because it's not, you, you haven't even gotten us down to a number that the towns can accept.
Yeah.
Alright, so I just wanted to lay that groundwork, and maybe I'll express some future frustration after you finish the next. So thank you, everybody.
Um, I, I want to amplify a point that you made, and that is, you know, being the point person that oversees the educational program of our school, school district, the last thing I want to have are classrooms in the twenty-four, twenty-five range. It's the last thing I want. It's the thing we try to protect the most. We are faced with a scenario where we're being put into a place of no choice, and it's not that it's anyone's fault, there are conditions that are afloat here that we are trying to navigate to get through these times, and that's what's critical to understand right now as we, as we go through this process. So we know to get to that place, we're going to have to make some reductions in our school district that are going to be painful reductions, and these are the kind of reductions that are going to impact our ability to advance forward our strategic agenda and the strategic plan. So it's with that happy note that I would like to take us into the administrative salary updates. We're going to begin, this is actually a celebration for an individual, and it demonstrated to us this is a place where we can, uh, pause, and that is reducing our curriculum director by one position. I'm pleased on the side to announce, uh, that Laura Padgerton, our director for ELA and social studies, um, has approached Assistant Superintendent Friend and I, uh, long before we were in this predicament, and said, "I really enjoy our work in teaching and learning. My heart lives inside a classroom with kids." And she says, "That's, that's where, uh, her peace and happiness lives in education." So when the opportunity affords, she would like to, to take advantage of the opportunity. It is by coincidence, um, that one of our tremendous eighth grade social studies teachers will be retiring at the conclusion of this year, and so, uh, I'm announcing that Laura, uh, excuse me, Laura Padgerton, LP as we call her, uh, will be the social studies teacher at Florence Sawyer beginning next year. So, we made a difficult decision that with, um, her, knowing we were making that move, we went back and said, "Well, then we are not going to fill that position for next year," because I think when we're looking at the reductions we have to make, we got to begin in the central office first. And so, um, the teaching and learning team is going to have to sort of carry the weight of the things that, that Laura carried as she was in her position as director, and will continue to be with vigor up until, and I just, knowing Laura who she is, she will always have her eye in the teaching and learning department and offer assistance where needed, if I know her in any way at all. But, uh, we recognize that we're going to have to sort of lock arms and, and help carry that weight. We were tremendously successful in launching our literacy curriculum this year, and so, ha- having reached that hurdle in our strategic work was a major achievement, and so now we're going to look to, to our employees on, across the district to keep that momentum. The second piece, um, this will tell you a little bit about the people who we work with. As we sat down, you can tell that since our last meeting, I've had some interesting and difficult conversations with, with people in our school system, and they will continue to happen over the coming weeks. Presented with the need to reduce another position in our leadership council, uh, we met with our principals, assistant principals, directors, and collectively agreed that rather than having to reduce another person's position and stymie the work and the momentum that we have in our departments, that we all agreed to take a zero percent salary increase for next year, uh, in an effort to help us move along in the budget. So the leadership council will be taking a zero percent increase on their salaries for next year, and you can see that's to the tune of two hundred and eight thousand dollars, which is the equivalent of two positions essentially. Okay. Mr. Mulcahen?
Sure. So again, as we make changes to the budget, we present the change to the operating and the assessments, uh, so nothing really to discuss other than that this just tracks how the changes impact, uh, the budget and the assessments, uh, from sort of category to category.
And now's where it gets really hard. So as you can see, the percentage increase of the operating budget still leaves us at an eight percent increase. In order for us to get to approximate the target of a five percent operational increase, we are looking to an additional eighteen unspecified positions across our school system that we are going to have to reduce. This eighteen reflected here is a reflection of what, uh, Unit A, Unit C, and non-rep positions would all be included to get to that marker, and the estimated health insurance reductions that would come to that. Um, those eighteen positions are unspecified today, not because we don't know the areas that we have to look at, it's that we need, uh, the time and to show our employees the respect that they deserve to have the kind of professional conversations we need to have with them. We also have, um, some announced retirements that have come to us in recent weeks that are typical at this time of year, after the first of the year, and so, we will make every effort in the world for any employees that are impacted by those reductions and retain them in our school system, keeping them employed through those places, but I can't guarantee that's going to be for everybody. So, um, beginning tomorrow, uh, we're meeting with, um, all of our principals together with our cabinet team, and we're going to be getting into, uh, the prioritization of where those are. What I can lead you to, um, that we would look to is the best practices that we put into play is the starting point for that. So, as we have class size standards of no more than twenty-two at K to two, and no more than twenty-four, um, uh, three and up, we now will take a literal interpretation of our current enrollment to look at those class size standards. So we'll be going back into our enrollment documents, removing the projected enrollment increases, because those projected enrollment increases, if we remember, are October one to October one, and so, we're considerably past October one now and typically don't receive a lot of new students in the springtime, so we'll be taking the literal interpretation of those standards, and when we come back to the committee, we'll show you what the impact of that is. So that will be certainly, I think, point to and indicate, um, other positions, but we're going to have to look at the elementary level, the middle school level, and, uh, the high school level, uh, in terms of those reductions. Uh, I will also recall out as well what we have discussed before as a committee and what was brought up in the first workshop, is looking at our middle school class sizes. Is there a way of looking at that, reframing that, and also looking at some cross-school positions to optimize, um, FTEs in those areas, and that's a possibility of doing that as well. So, that's not new news, it's just to sort of amplify where we begin, and once we're there, we're still not going to be there, and we're going to have to reduce positions, and what those are yet... Is there a way of looking at that, reframing that, and also looking at some cross-school positions to optimize FTEs in those areas? And that's a possibility of doing that as well. So that's not new news, it's just to sort of amplify where we begin. And once we're there, we're still not going to be there, and we're going to have to reduce positions. And what those are yet, I'm not prepared to say today, but when we come back together as a committee on February twelfth, we will be bringing the specificities of that to you. I also want this committee, the public, and all of our employees out there to know that I've engaged with our association's leadership, both for Unit A and Unit C, and look forward to some engaging conversations, because it's critically important that they be at the table talking with us and recognize the work that we have in front of us. So with the reduction of eighteen unspecified positions and the health insurance adjustment that comes with that, you would see that that brings the budget to just under seventy million dollars, which is an operational increase of five point one, five percent over last year. And you can see the increases for each of our towns. It's at this point that I would like to share with the committee and all of our residents that Mr. Mokaren and I sat down with the three town administrators this past Tuesday and went over these numbers and the presentation with them, so that they are perfectly clear on what the expectations are and where we are today. The feedback that we got, and you would predict this, looking at the numbers, is that the towns still feels secure in moving forward, and the towns of Bolton and Lancaster are going to have bigger challenges, and they're challenges that we share together. But I can't emphasize more, these deep cuts are going to impact teaching and learning in the school system. They're going to have an impact, and it's, we have to get together and problem solve the degree of impact and minimize that as much as possible. So, Mr. Mokaren, next slide. A slide that we added to this presentation today that may not have been in the slide deck that was posted yesterday, but I believe it's updated and posted to the meeting materials now, is this particular slide, because I want to illustrate sort of the gravity of the drivers of the situation that we find ourselves in. So as our community is having dialogues about this, they just understand the why behind it. And I'm also going to implore everyone in our community that no one is to blame here. This is the cost to educate, and each and every child in our towns deserves the education which is going to help them the most. And for some of those children who weren't afforded the same privilege, opportunity, and gifts that others have, require education that is very costly, and is it our moral mandate, our moral obligation to provide them that education? And it's costly. So as we look to the challenge we have here, you can see that this budget would be a three point four million dollar increase over last year's budget. And when you look just at three lines, special education services that are non-salary, that's transportation and tuition. Projected insurance benefits increases, which could increase if we come in higher than twelve percent, along with the increase in charter school tuitions, brings us to three million dollars. So I ask everybody to let that land on your ears for a minute, that of the three point four million dollar increase that we're going to be seeing in our budget, three million of it comes from mandates and elements for which are not under our control. So it's in that way that we have to be thoughtful and creative, and it's the why behind why we are working so hard to advocate for our students and for our educators at the State House to look for ways to address these issues. Now, to put a more positive light on a message that feels doom and gloom, is that there is conversation out there that recognizes this problem, and currently there's an FY-25 supplemental budget, a one hundred and fifty million dollar education earmark, and that's such a supplemental budget for this school year that is currently under consideration. And we don't know what type of relief that would bring specifically to us, but if we were to get additional funding through Circuit Breaker channels, for instance, and transportation reimbursement this year, we would be able to apply it to our current budget, thus taking some pressures off of the Circuit Breaker offsets we're currently applying. Mr. Mokaren, save me if I get off the rails here. So, the supplemental budget, if you see or hear anything about the current FY-25 supplemental budget out there, it does not solve our budget issues for next year. It helps us now, and it helps us in those accounts so that we might have some potential leverage for offsets in future budgets, but it doesn't solve the budget issue. And the second piece around this is that we have only heard from the governor. We have not yet heard from the House or the Senate on their budget proposals, and those are the representatives that interface the most with school district officials. And that's why it's going to be critically important that our legislative breakfast this year bring forward the criticality of looking at state funding formulas differently to help us address these increased costs to educate our students at ways that don't fall on the shoulders of local citizens as much. And I've had this conversation with many folks that, you know, you're paying it, whether you're paying it through the State House or paying it locally, you're still paying it. But yes, but those funding formulas are fundamental structures that give us the ability to understand how to craft and build our budgets, thus making heavy swings in tuition costs more palatable over time. So this is something that we have to work on, not to mention, some of these numbers are simply due to changes in enrollment that can happen when new families come to us that need those services. So I think it's critically important, Mr. Mokaren, if you can go back to the, I think this is the slide that I think is critically important for all of us to understand and all of us to talk to, is no matter how many cuts we make to the classroom in our school system, we cannot solve that problem. And so we need to think long and hard about how far we're willing to go to fund our school system, and I'm calling on this committee, calling on our residents to support our efforts in bringing forth a responsible budget. The question might be asked, are we going to be able to deliver a high-quality educational program? And that is, we're going to make every effort to do that. But we are going to have to do some things differently to make it happen. And we've worked really, really hard these past three years, building off of a strategic plan to bring in multitude systems of support, common diagnostic and indicator assessments to our students, bringing in the PLCs so our educators are able to build collaborative practices, not to mention all the hard work, not to mention the hundreds and thousands of dollars of grants that our teaching and learning office has brought to the school system that has augmented our budgets already. So we have turned over every stone. We have looked to every funding source possible that we can get to, to fund the program that our students deserve. And it's up to us to make sure that we bring a budget forward that educates these children in the way that we are morally and ethically responsible to do. So with that, I'll take some questions. And before we move on to E and D.
Go ahead, Robyn. So with regards to the transportation, that was obviously like a big number that stood out.
Yeah.
And if I understood correctly from our last conversation, there was changes because we were changing providers and we were going to be paying a certain amount per-
Yes.
-per trip, and now something happened with that, and now we're with another provider who's giving us a huge, you know, a big jump on that.
Second bidder.
So are we still looking, or are we just, are we already locked and loaded with that person? Like, are we still trying to look for other options for those guys?
We are looking for other options. I'm looking at Ms. Demansch right now, because this is something that we talk about, I don't know, I think I knock on your door daily to ask any changes. I actually have a board meeting at ABC on Friday. This is our agenda. And so we will be discussing these points, and we're looking closely at what are our other options for transportation. So we'll be coming back to the committee on the twelfth with any new findings that we have there. So right now, this is the boat that we're in. So in a process where the low bidder was not able to deliver the services, we had to go to the second bidder, and the second bidder was a much higher cost. By state law, we are obligated to take that bid, as it were so, but we are constantly reevaluating that. Ms. Demansch, myself, Mr. Mokaren, met specifically with the ABC Collaborative. They act as our agent in the collaborative process for bidding, to do a close examination of all of our roots for efficiencies in transportation and to make sure we're maximizing every nickel out of that. So we are, and we will update the committee if there's any improvement in that area.
Any other questions?
A quick question. I'm the Director of the Superintendent. Maybe you could enlighten me, because every year we get to this time of year, we hear about what, you know, our budget constraints are, and, you know, we hear members of this committee talk about, and the Superintendent as well, talk about, you know, the need to petition our state legislature for more funding. So if you could enlighten me, because I'm not one of these attendees at these legislative breakfasts, and I'm not interfacing with my local legislators probably as much as I should, explain to me, when you have these conversations, or when they present themselves before superintendents and educators, I don't think any legislator in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts would suggest that there shouldn't be more funding for schools.
Correct.
Okay. So in that vein, do the legislators, or does anybody that, you know, interfaces with this district, ever present any alternatives with regards to the state budget? Like, if we need more money for education, we can take it from someplace. Do they ever, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, did they ever, because I sit here and I got a million scathingly brilliant ideas going around in my head, but no one listens to me, so. I'm just wondering what our legislature is saying, because I can think of a number of areas where we could fund education, but I'd like to see what they have to say.
Yeah, I'll tell you an area that I'm thinking about, and I have had some conversations with our local representatives about, and that is what was the quote-unquote millionaire's tax that came into play two years ago. Last year in the governor's budget, and please, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so these are just rounded estimates from those conversations, is that approximately one point, one point four, one point five billion was applied to educational funding, but receipts came in at two point four. And so then that's left to ways and means to distribute based upon whatever advocacy is happening in their towns locally. So the supplemental budget that's coming forward, I think, is a product of some of that as well. And so as we look at that, I will also say, and you're going to hear from Assistant Superintendent Friend about a grant to close the evening, that a lot of the funding sources that are coming from the state level to school systems are being put out through the forms of competitive grants, and so school systems are having to essentially swordfight with each other to chase those dollars down. And striking the right balance of grant-funded initiatives to the schools and structural funding to the school systems is a very tricky thing to do, and for every representative in the State House, I'm willing to bet there's a different opinion on the percentages on which they do that. So I'm grateful that we have some representatives that are on the Educational Subcommittee that can take that behind closed doors as they build their budgets. I do think our advocacy helps. The thirty-dollar limit was increased to a hundred and four dollars for Circuit Breaker last year. MASs was advocating for a hundred and ten. We have advocated on the platform two years in a row. Not that I would tell you what the new platform is, but I can tell you what the last two years was, is funding Circuit Breaker and transportation at ninety percent reimbursement rates as opposed to seven to five. So these are the moves that we're trying to make to help our, to motivate our state legislators to get those actual changes made. So it is what we have to do, and we just have to continue to voice our case to get to the places we need to get to. Mr. Mokaren made a point earlier tonight, however, those decisions won't be made by the time this committee is bound by the regional agreement to pass a budget. They come after that. And so the advocacy and the work that we can do while just in a budget in a single year then comes into the budget the next year in the form of revenue, and that revenue is then turned back in the form of E and D, to which then we have been applying to the budget as an offset. So I'm sorry, I went on a tangent there during the session, but I hope I addressed some of your comments.
Well, that queues up the next conversation, and we are going to flow into our E and D appropriation.
Yeah. Just so, as a primer, our excess and deficiency, or E and D fund, essentially is the same as a town's free cash. So at the end of every fiscal year, we close our books, and if we have surplus operating budget, that goes to our excess and deficiency fund. If we have excess revenue over what was necessary to run the school district, that goes to our excess and deficiency fund. Typically, that fund holds a balance, so when you put those three things together, we submit that to the Department of Revenue. The work they're doing right now that we're waiting on is our certification of that. We can't use any of the certification, the certified balance, as an appropriation to the next budget until it is properly certified. The other piece that I would add on that is legislatively, we cannot as an administrative team make changes to the amount of E and D being used during the year. It's part of the vote of the budget, which is approved by the school committee and therefore gets the school committee's approval of the appropriation. So the proposed budget still holds the appropriation, is a revenue source at one point four million dollars, same as last year. We know that any reductions in staffing, and if, as Superintendent Downing said, if we were able to move people into where there might be a retirement, there's less of a realization on the cost differential through attrition. Therefore, we can predict that our overall surplus at the end of FY-26 would be lower than it will be at the end of FY-25. If you know back at the December operating report that I presented earlier, the majority of that surplus is due to the salary differentials through attrition that happens within our buildings. Another piece is, obviously, we want to maintain a healthy balance to just protect the district, you know, just as a free cash does for towns, just as a savings account does for a family. Unforeseen one-time costs can come up. The other piece is that it does support our credit rating, and we are in the process, you know, of building a new high school, and this supports the credit rating through Moody's or any other agency that we would use through our financial advisors. So it's helpful. This is one of the things that they look at. What percent it contributes to, I do not know, but it is a factor on our credit rating. So just from historicals to add to discussion, so when it says fiscal year, that's the voted budget. So for the voted budget this year, we had a certified E and D balance of two point four million dollars through the Department of Revenue, which was three point seven percent of the budget. There is a statutory cap of five percent. You cannot go over five percent. So a school district couldn't squirrel away fifteen percent of its budget. You have to either turn that back or start to appropriate it or use it. So the appropriated budget amount is what was voted by the school committee, and that's what the remaining balance is. So you can see the variability from year to year. While our percent of budget has stayed relatively stable between that two and where we are at right now of a higher three point seven percent, you can see what happens with the remaining balance. When you rely on an appropriated budget amount that is steady, and there's variability in what you can turn back to your excess and deficiency fund, what you have is this sort of high-wire act of fluctuating between being able to maintain a balance or getting really close to not having a balance at all. So it's a fiscal lever, but it has to obviously be discussed and used appropriately. So I present this just for the information for the school committee tonight.
And this is actually a budget item that we're going to take up at the end here. So if you have questions about the appropriation- So if you have questions about the appropriateness of these levels, just hold it. But I think that what they're saying is that they're looking to use 1.4 in this next go around again.
That's correct. And relative to that proposal, the rationale is thus, I want to amplify Mr. Mulcaren's point, is that the significant portion of what returns to E and D are our salary savings from employees who have retired or left of the district, and we hire employees at lower rates coming in. If the employees leaving us are filled with employees who currently work for us due to the reductions I described before, you don't actualize the same degree in those savings. So it's for that reason that we're not recommending any increase to E and D.
This last go-around, we borrowed 1.4. What do you think they're going to certify?
I think it'll be around the same, based on the work that we did with our, our new auditing firm and what was submitted. I think it'll be approximately the same.
And so you think that after we borrow again, we'll still have about a million dollars in there?
Yeah, and I would use the term appropriate, not borrow. But yes, we would, our current recommendation is to not change that from what we're doing this year. See, not change, if that's going up to anything. No, that's FY '25. The recommendation for '26 is still 1.4. This is just the historical data, because we don't have the certified figure yet, Mr. Powell, so that's why I didn't include that for FY '26.
Good. Question?
Yeah, I just feel like this warrants some discussion among the school committee in terms of the recommendation of how much E and D to use in a year where we're proposing 18, elimination of 18 full-time equivalent positions. And I personally feel that this, you know, I'm looking at the remaining balances in prior years, much lower than what we're proposing for this year. But this is specific to this budget, not as a protocol discussion.
You would argue...
I'm just saying that I think some, I'm curious if anybody else agrees with me that of all the years that I've been on school committee, maybe this is the year that we would consider using a little bit more E and D to either make it, make the potential cuts less, to reduce the amount of positions that we're looking at cutting, or reduce the impact to towns' operating assessments. So I'm just throwing that out there. You know, I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't.
Well, if you all are satisfied with the budget presentation, not satisfied, obviously none of us are satisfied, but if you have exhausted all of your questions about this budget presentation, we can actually move to the next agenda item.
We actually have a couple more slides.
I actually think that's premature, because the protocol discussion is different from what Amy's talking here.
It's different, though. Yeah, I'm talking about use of E and D this year for a specific purpose. That discussion is separate.
Here's what I would think about, here's what I think about the discussion that we're going to have. I would argue that we shouldn't be using E and D at all, because E and D is, for all intents and purposes, to the layman, a rainy day account. And so appropriating any E and D at all is bad practice. Well, it's not bad practice. It's worked for us, because at the end of every fiscal year, we actually underspend, and we can replenish. But ideally, we would not have to replenish, because we didn't, I'm saying borrow, but I guess we didn't appropriate any of the E and D. I don't think we should spend E and D ever.
But if you look at our five-year history, we have been.
I agree. But remember that we used to talk about the hamster wheel, and how we got to get off, we have to get off of this. It's almost like, because if, let's say that we, could you go to the five-year? Let's say that in 2023, we had, you know, a major capital failure at the high school that needed to be dealt with quickly, and we only had $37,000 to deal with it. I think that we need to, I recognize that the towns need help, apparently. So I recognize that us digging into our E and D would rescue them, but that's not good budgeting.
Can I, can I make a distinction before, and then I would like to open this discussion up? I want to be clear that I'm, it's not just about rescuing towns. I look at the budget that is proposed, and the staff reductions are worth $1.6 million. And we have E and D fund with a remaining balance that's much more than it has been in previous years. That's what I'm saying.
But what's the impact to the credits rating you spoke to? If you start burning that down to 37,000, what's the impact to how it's going to affect the high school and...
I can't cite a specific change to it, however, it's one of the factors that gets considered in our credit rating review by Moody's. And it would be bystanders and board and everybody else.
I think, too, the one thing you need to keep on the table is that E and D should not be used for operational costs. So if we were to, if we were to maintain staff with this remaining balance for this coming year, that would be then gone, and we would have to just have this whole exercise happen again the following year. So E and D is really just for one-time emergency expense. It can't be for operational cost. And I mean, maybe you could, maybe you could get one out of it, but, so I'm going to go to Kirk first, and then I'll work on this.
I want to illustrate that point. So hypothetically speaking, we move forward with this plan. And we don't have the actualized savings of retired employees with new employees coming in. And, and we, let's just assume these are the numbers of what FY '26 would be. And if we increase that to, say, 2 million, that leaves a balance of 444,000. And if you only return 400,000 to 500,000 next year, because you don't have the salary savings, we'll be sitting here next year, but our certified E and D balances are going to be more like 800, 900,000. That's a fiscal cliff that is, we should avoid at all costs, because that's when you get into extremely draconian cuts. And what we're trying to do by recommending not to use E and D is to preserve. It's, so we have to manage that E and D account in a way to where we have, like, projected reason, we would only want to put, to offset with E and D what we reasonably, less than what we would reasonably expect to get back into it, so that account can grow. And it's got to grow to those levels for the reasons that you talk about. And using those funds for operational salary offsets and such is, is, it's not a recognizable...
No. I wonder, Sean, did you have a question?
Well, I had a hypothetical, which is basically the one you just outlined. I think the only thing is, if I'm understanding the proposed budget, there, it's a lot leaner. So if the unexpected cost is likely to have less excess cash at the end, even without the salary aspect of it, if that's correct. So we're sort of setting ourselves up for not having any E and D funds for the following year's budget and that set sort of cliff you were talking about.
Scott?
Well, I was just going to, following the logic you're outlining, it seems that using the same amount is actually still not the most responsible course of action. We should actually be reducing it. And to Leah's point, I mean, it sounds like Leah is advocating a strategy where we actually get to a 5% balance, and then to the extent that we have any excesses at the end of the year, they get just, they just get turned back to the town.
I think there's lots of mechanisms you can do with that, Mr. Powell, as those budgets are appropriated to the school system. I would like to meet the superintendents of these school systems, but as I approach, these are the phantom stories you hear at conferences sometimes, of some methodologies would be when you reach those 5% thresholds and you're anticipating E and D certifying above that. Well, then you spend that amount and apply it to things like your OEDP accounts, for instance, to increase your OEDP balances. So there's other, there's different ways that people can use that strategy when you hit the 5% threshold. We're trying to walk a really, 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 really fine line right now of avoiding the catastrophic event while also, that's in front of us, while also building long-term stability. And that is a very difficult trick to pull off.
No, I mean, I'm grateful that we have leadership that is walking that line and doing a really good job of it. I just wanted, I wanted to bring that observation into the discussion in case others were looking at the situation through that lens.
Yes. And that's, that's an important lens to think of. And the equivalent for towns is the free cash accounts. And towns that have really managed their free cash well, and how they apply their free cash to one-time expenses and not use them as operational offsets, find themselves in healthier positions.
All right, so you said you had a couple more slides.
Mr. Mulcaren?
So as we've reviewed throughout the evening, so the total reductions presented that includes our offsets would put us at a reduction from the budget workshop of just almost 3.6 million, so 3.5 million dollars. And again, we've just categorized the reductions this evening to show you exactly what they, the total sum is here. So some unresolved factors, again, we're waiting on our final rates. And again, our range signal was not near what it has been, so we'll find out more in the next couple of weeks. Again, we're still waiting for our excess and deficiency certification, so we can move forward with an appropriation. And then Assistant Superintendent Friend has some good news on the PRISM grant.
So some auspicious news, some unknown news, but we learned this week that the Healy Driscoll administration announced that 15 school districts in the Commonwealth would be funded through literacy launch, which is the PRISM grant, and Nishobod was one of the 15 districts. We're super proud of being able to walk through this door. I'd like to commend our teacher teams. We went through four rounds of interviews at the district. It was a very competitive process, and so I'd like to extend a thank you to Laura Padgington, as well as our building principals and our teachers for participating in that alongside me. The PRISM grant, just to provide a little bit of information, with more information to come once, once we're made aware, as they provide information to us, it will provide substantial funding and intensive support to participating school districts over multiple years, and they have indicated that that is up to five years of funding to support K to three early literacy. So participating districts, as it's written, as it's been stated, as it's been stated in the press release, will receive substantial funding and intensive support as part of this partnership. We're waiting more information from Desi right now, and hope to have more information in the coming weeks. That is, that is what has been predicted. At the next school committee, I will provide a request for the school committee to approve the beginning phase of this partnership, which is in the amount of a $30,000 grant to be used for substantive planning, which will mark the first step in the process. So we're awaiting more information, but this is really good news. And again, auspicious news, unknown news, in terms of we don't have any definitive amounts of funding. That's promised, but the language is such repeated from the governor and from the acting commissioner, that it's substantial funding over the course of five years.
I will add the accolades to, the reason why the district and district team was so successful is because they have a leader at the helm that just commands a high degree of respect and professional integrity, and Desi recognized that. So, and that is our Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend, and her team would be the first group of people to tell you all that. So I'm speaking on behalf of your team as well. What I will tell the committee is, to throw the wet blanket on it, this doesn't help our budget issue, because the development of this will come after we've closed a budget. However, what it has the potential to help is the cost of some materials and some positions. We don't know what that will look like yet. So we're engaged, we're going to be on it, we're going to be pressing Acting Commissioner Russell Johnson's office on a regular basis to get as much as information we can. And Assistant Superintendent, are we going to be bringing this grant forward?
The next meeting.
The next meeting. So she'll describe more to you in the next meeting for approval of that grant. So let's consider this the first pass at that, so then you'll get those grant materials through the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Well, we thank you for that good news at the end there. Congratulations, and we appreciate all that hard work. Amy?
Yeah, you might be addressing this with your next statement, but can you help us understand the timing here? Because we're, we're going to be taking, and there are unspecified cuts in the proposed budget. So like, when will we learn more about?
Yes.
Will we be required to vote on that budget before we know the details?
Mr. Mulcaren, we go back to the calendar of activities, the very good presentation. Thank you. Thanks, Colin. All right, to Ms. Cohen's question. You know, I sometimes overspeak. I'm not, I'm going to let, stay out of Mr. Mulcaren's lane here and let Mr. Mulcaren explain our next iterations.
So to, just a question about next steps. So at the next budget update in two weeks on the 12th, again, we'll have some more definitive news on our health insurance. It will bring more specificity with regards to what reductions may look like. And again...
Yes, you will understand where we need to make the cuts at the next school committee meeting.
And as I said during the non-salary portion, we go back to it again. We take a look at things again. We start asking ourselves the questions and what, you know, what is absolutely necessary. And at the same time, we still need to move the educational program along, and it's not just the staff that do that, but supplies, materials, and everything else that goes along with operating a high-functioning school district. So we'll continue to look at it. Budget more will give its review. We will bring the budget to the town-based FinCom and advisories in that tri, sort of like joint meeting. And then we will bring forward another update. Once we're through that, the public hearing happens on March 5th, and then that will be the final update, and you will have a chance to vote on the budget on March 12th. So there's a lot of work there, but it's a short amount of time, so I can't stress that enough. So we're going to, we're going to, this is a daily, all-day type work right now, and we're, we're proud to do it, and it's, it's, it's very worthwhile for our students and obviously our staff, too, and our families, so.
I want the committee and the communities to also know that unscheduled activities that are not on the calendar, but are just operational work that we do, is we'll be engaging, as we regularly do, with our town administrators on the budget cycle. But we also will be reaching out to the chairs of both our finance and advisory committees, as well as the chairs of our select boards, to have some discussions and to understand how we can navigate this particular year through those town processes.
Can you quickly, and this is getting back into the meats here, can you just very quickly illuminate why the STO number is so much lower than the other numbers? In like a nutshell, Rob?
So in a nutshell, the way the formula works is, so STO's minimum local contribution, right, is not going to move a significant amount, because their sort of foundation enrollment has decreased over time. has decreased over time. Their valuation is capped, so there's not a lot of room there for that to be applied. Then, on top of that, the variable assessment that's through that five-year rolling average, their five-year rolling average, while it's still higher than the rest, has continued to go down. And then so when you do the variable assessment of what's left after all of these factors are applied, what ends up on STO is lower because, assuming the increase is lower, they're sort of been capped, right? So it's, it's a combination of them, that they're being capped and their minimal not increasing, along with the fact that their enrollment is decreasing. So it's a compounding factor.
And the opposite is true about Lancaster.
Correct.
Bolton's kind of in the middle there.
Can I just, yeah, throw a little comment? Because I'm thinking about this and I'm feeling kind of sick to my stomach about the cost increases and what that means to a lot of families in terms of, you know, where our taxes are gonna land and, and what the costs are gonna be to us. And at the same time, I'm really thinking about, is it okay for us, or is it okay, period, to, are we satisfied with what is the minimum that we can do for our kids? Because what is the minimum that we need to have in order to make this happen? Because I feel like our kids deserve more than the minimum. And so I'm feeling kind of conflicting feelings here, and I just kind of want to throw that out to people to think about at the, you know, while we're, while you're thinking, oh my God, how am I gonna pay for this? At the same time, what do we owe to our kids?
Thanks, Sean. All right, everybody, that's gonna be the budget update for tonight, and I know that we are at 9:01. There is only really one item left on our agenda, and it's an important item, but a short, a short item. Can I get a thumbs up just for a few more minutes? Okay. And so I'm gonna tee it up, and then Scott's gonna give you a brief explanation. Ultimately, on the agenda, it says E and D target balance protocol discussion. Budget and warrant is in the midst of a conversation regarding whether or not the school committee should establish a protocol regarding how we use E and D, what E and D appropriation looks like, you know, all the philosophy and the action behind it. And so as budget and warrant was getting underway in this conversation, I said, hit pause because we really need to put it to the full committee because all the subcommittees work at the will of the full committee. And so, Scott, do you want to add to that at all?
Just, we, we think we should have a more systematic approach to how we use E and D, so we should have some documentation saying, here's what our objectives are with respect to E and D, rather than the, rather ad hoc approach we've been using up to this point. And so that's really what we're looking to do, is just come up with some sort of process, you know, kind of like we did for OPEP in terms of saying, you know, here's how we're gonna get to a higher OPEP balance, you know? We have other protocols. We think, well, we should have a protocol around E and D, so it's a more systemic approach to how we use E and D and what our objectives are with respect to E and D, rather than the current ad hoc approach we've been using. So, you know, any, I think the next step looks like we probably talk about it some more, some different approaches we could take, and then get some feedback from the committee on what, what their preferences might look like, as far as what different approaches are more favorable than others.
And Kirk, this is something that you, you know, obviously this is not your top priority at this moment in time, you're busy. Over the next few months, though, do you imagine this being something you could get behind and partner with?
Without question. And I'll say this, that I would not recommend a policy or a protocol. I would recommend, I, but crafting a recommendation from the budget warrant subcommittee, which is where that, I think that dialogue can drill down on, a recommendation on how we approach the usage of the E and D in the school system, and bring that back to the committee is, is sort of our commitment to that usage. I think it's well within bounds, and I think it would, it would help us, it would give us solid footing year over year in the budget process, and it gives documentation to fall back upon when residents are asking about, why isn't E and D being utilized more? And we would have a rationale, we would have an approach that would be a foundational document to help you all have the talking points to explain that to folks.
Can I get a thumbs up or a thumbs down if you're okay with budget and warrant going forward with this conversation? I don't think we really need a motion. We have one, not so much. Jordan, did you want to weigh in?
No, I was just echoing the Superchance sentence. I agree with Paul by the way.
All right, well...
I'm sorry? Why'd you... Well, I mean, the idea was that, I think I'm, I think I might, my, well, I don't know if anyone articulated, but I mean, I would be, I'd probably take it a step further. I wouldn't want to see any restriction on E and D. I would think that, like, the administration, to their discretion, how they use it. And I concur with you that I think that, you know, historically speaking, since we've been on the committee, our E and D, our E and D balance has been paltry and pathetic, and I would love to see us get to the point where we had at least a 5% threshold or so.
Just a point, a clarification on E and D. I appreciate that, Attorney Gleason. Myself and Warmer, Mr. Mulcaren, has the authority to use E and D. It has to be an appropriation made by the school committee. So in the voting of the school budget, when we have an E and D recommendation, you are authorizing us to use that, that money. So we can't make a move with E and D without the approval of the school committee.
Well, I'm glad to see that the committee, there's some consensus on the committee to give budget and warrant the authority they need to converse about this. We'll look forward to you guys bringing it back to us when you're ready and have something to share. All right. All right, everybody. The mood is somber, and I apologize for that. Are there any subcommittee or advisory reports before we wrap? Anything that needs to come forward?
I mean, my report kind of got wrapped up with other proposed reports, but the communication subcommittee did meet at the school.
Students Council.
There's so many councils and committees, I'm afraid, you say? But, so we are well working on our goal and making progress.
Awesome. If you guys noticed the planning calendar, which Alida has so kindly brought up, our next meeting is going to be, ooh...
February.
Going to be in the conference room, February 12th, so we're gonna, because we flipped a couple.
Yeah.
The next one is in person again, so can't wait to see me, I bet. So February 12th, we do have, I want to say, school committee goal check-in? No, I moved it. Remember, guys, we're on a two-year cycle for our goals, just like the superintendent is, and so that is not upcoming. But just keep in mind, if your subcommittee is making progress toward those goals, because it's something we'll check in on in May. But is there anything that you'd want to see added to the February 12th budget? We're gonna be voting on the district, or seeing a proposed district calendar for just one year or two?
It's the same one. It's up there, it's the same.
We are bringing just one, and I know our practice has been to, it's problematic to bring two calendars in a row for reasons of we've had to do a lot of changing and some other things, so we'll be happy to discuss that when we bring the calendar.
And then I put the vote on the 26th?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Anything else that you guys see, or...
It's gonna be a short meeting?
Super short. I promise. Paul, is that too many of his work cut out for us? Let me know if you can get to it.
Yeah, we're gonna have the meeting on the 6th, so we should have some to bring, but it probably won't be as, we're getting, it's getting little down.
I will, I will need to speak to competence and determination at the next meeting.
New, is that new business?
So we'll start in Policy Subcommittee, in Ms. Vessels, I'm certain we'll give an update to that, but I think I'll want to bring some more specifics to that because we'll queue up a communication in the comment at the end of that week around competence and determinations and, and what that means in Neshova. That'll go out in the comment on the 14th.
Any other things you want to throw out there, guys? Keep in mind, March, we have three meetings because one of them is the hearing, which there'll be an update, and then the hearing, and then the hearing is for the public to come and talk with us. All right? So if there's nothing further, everyone, I'm gonna move to agenda.
Second.
All in favor? And opposed? Wonderful. Thank you, everybody. Have a big night.